Good evening. It's 5:02 and time for the regular board meeting. Would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Neekamp.
Here.
Mr. Kristof.
Here.
Mrs. Sanders.
Here.
Mrs. Olshewski.
Here.
Please follow me in a pledge allegiance and a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. And let's see, next is the approval of the agenda.
So move second.
Questions, comments? Roll, please.
Mr. Kristof.
Yes.
Mrs. Sanders.
Yes.
Mrs. Olshewski.
Yes.
Mrs. Neekamp.
Yes.
Next is public participation. I have a couple here, and Jeanette, you are first.
Yes, ma'am.
Do I need to state my address?
No.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Jeanette Cooper Shervostova. I am proud to say that I was born and raised in southeastern Ohio. I've been very involved in education as a teacher, school board member, and currently completing my PhD dissertation in education. I've dedicated my life to supporting the healthy development of children, and frankly, I think children are pretty awesome. I love learning about other points of view and supporting parents so that they can be better parents for their kids. I have come to speak to the board on behalf of parents in this district who are afraid to speak up. They have asked me to come here from Chicago. I moderate a group for parents online called Concerned Parents of Transgender Non-Binary Kids, Teens, and Young Adults. And we have more than 1,600 members, growing by about 20 parents per day. I need to tell you why this issue of transgender identified children is so important to me. More than two years ago, my daughter and only child went to her dad's house and never returned. I got a scripted email from her saying that she was transgender and always knew she was a boy. She was 12 years old at the time and had lived with me six days a week since her dad and I divorced four years earlier. When I went to petition the court that my daughter be returned to my custody, it was not granted. She had a history of mental health issues that started after the divorce. This and her repetition of the word unsafe gave her a golden ticket to the hearts and minds of every adult in the courtroom. Like many children who claim a transgender identity, she is very intelligent, polite to a fault, and sensitive to how others perceive her. She used unsafe as a substitute for the word uncomfortable. The words she used and the way she spoke made everyone forget that she still had the brain development of a 12-year-old. After seven months, the investigation concluded that I did not understand my children's, my child's transgender identity. And until I understood, it was recommended that my daughter not be returned to my custody. What I understand is there is a powerful social contagion of children who are changing their names, pronouns, demanding powerful opposite sex hormones, surgeries, and calling child protective services if their parents do not use their chosen name and pronouns. What I understand is that my child has suffered trauma early in her life and that has not been addressed sufficiently in therapy. Rupturing the bond and fueling distrust between a parent and a child is the worst crime and worst trauma that adults can bring to a child's life. Today marks 822 days since my daughter left. She is now 15. No, I don't have custody of her. What is my crime? I will not lie to her or to the court. I will not agree with the idea that she is not a girl and that she has a new name and pronouns that I must use for her to feel safe. Instead of affirming, immediately changing the name and pronouns of the child that I raised for 12 years, I asked questions. I believe that she is capable of coping with questions and capable of critical thinking. Like many psychologists with expertise in this field, I believe that social transition is a powerful psychological treatment that causes permanent impacts on a child's development and sense of self within the family and society. I do not believe that social transition is good for her long-term health, and I will not participate in a psychological process that I believe is unhealthy for my child and requires me to lie. I love my daughter too much to lie to her. I am willing to stand beside her as she learns to cope with distress in life. I am committed to learning new skills to be a better mother to her. My door will always be open to her. She has suffered trauma, like many, many transgender identified children, and that has gone unaddressed in this process, despite my demands for her to receive treatment for it. The consequence of my decision to not affirm her self-chosen identity and name is that I am not allowed to see her or communicate with her. I have accepted that consequence. I would never wish for her to be compelled to speak words that she considers untrue. She may feel otherwise at this moment, but her feelings, no matter how consistent, persistent, and consistent, do not change what she knows about herself. A lie, no matter how many times it is repeated, will never become the truth. The truth is that for most children, gender dysphoria resolves in puberty with no treatment. To tell children that they or anyone else can and do literally change sex is interfering with a critical process of child development, and it is a lie. No teacher, no parent, no student should be lying to children. It is not kind to lie. I am extremely open-minded about what girls and boys can be and become. No child is born in the wrong body. What we wear, what we do personally or professionally, how we feel, who we love is not gender, it is personality. What I am asking you to do is this. Read Ohio Bill, Ohio House Bill 454, which is currently in committee. Contact your House Representatives and Senators to share your thoughts immediately. This bill would prevent the psychological treatment of social transition that are currently administered by some Ohio schools now. That is a psychological treatment that schools are administering. And it would stop the experimental medical procedures that are currently being performed on children, children like me, to cosmetically alter their bodies to conform to stereotypes about what it means to be a woman or be a man. Please make a plan to call, write, or visit every single one of your elected representatives. Two, share information with parents about their children. Model healthy, open communication between adults and recognize that parents are integral to a child's success in school. Parents know more about their children than you will ever know. Speak up. Do not allow your fear to keep you from sharing what you know is happening to children in schools regarding gender identity and the teaching of gender ideology. I know what it is like to be gender nonconforming, and it does not involve hating my body, injecting myself with anything, or removing my healthy body parts. When I was a child, I got adults who told me that I didn't need to change anything about myself and that I just needed nicer friends, and I'm thankful for that. If you need any more materials than what I have given you, please contact me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mark.
Good evening. Mark Henson, White Cross Drive here in Pickerton. First, I want to just say that I went to the Pickerton High School North Culture Climate Reset Day thing this afternoon with the parents. It was a, it was a good evolution. A lot of good information was passed. There was a good Q and A at the end. I told Mr. Olbruck that. The suggestion I had for him is that maybe to do it a little later in the evening where he could get more parents there. Second, I want to congratulate you, Vanessa Clay as well, on getting re-elected to the board. JD, you too. I'm only here this evening to just reiterate some hopes for the near future. That's how I'll put it. For the kids' sake, I'm sincerely praying that the new board and the district leadership is, one, more transparent in what is published regarding student achievement and school climate performance and data information. Does more listening than talking. For example, maybe via some new town hall forums, for example. Three is more engaged than disengaged in issues that really matter, student achievement and school climate stuff specifically, is more focused on the success of all students by reimagining things like discipline through restorative practices. And then finally is more strategic versus tactical in what you're focused on through the board agenda. For example, developing, publishing, and educating the public on SMART goals for the district and schools regarding student achievement and school climate by spending your valuable time on things like consent agenda items, which are basically routine district matters. I'm hopeful that for the kids' sake, the new board will reorient itself and become a more valuable tool for the district in engaging our entire community. Thanks for listening.
Thanks, Mark. And I got another one here for, from Danielle.
Running in the north last thing here. Hi, Danielle Resicki. We have four children in the district here. I too attended the event at Pick High School North today. And I just wanted to talk as a member of the community and still feeling new here after five and a half years. We're still figuring out how this all works, and I'm trying to get involved and be at all the things that we can. I just want to say, you know, for Pick High School, Pick North High School to be focusing on community building, I just feel like it starts so much earlier than that. And with one kid at every school level this year, we have not felt that as a family, and we've had the conversation with our kids over dinner, that that community building starts in elementary school, and it grows with them through the years. And I just want to see more of a focus on it at all levels. By the time they're in high school, I hate to say too little, too late, but we've already lost so many of those kids by that age, and it's just got to start earlier. So I really appreciated the open dialogue, like at the meeting today. Lakeview has in their family, their weekly newsletter, a family feedback form. I sent out to all my kids' other schools asking if they could have a similar form on their, you know, newsletters. Dr. Mr. Olbruck said that he would put it on their form today. The staff at Tolgate Middle Schools, that they would put that on their form. There's just got to be some way for them to hear from parents. I know it's hard to get parents in the buildings with COVID measures still in place to some extent, but there's got to be some kind of way to open up more dialogue. I wasn't able to make it to the town hall event that some people organized last week, but I would love to see more of that. Just more, more of that community building we're all wishing for. You know, again, this is our sixth year in the district combined. It's like 19, you know, sessions of school between all my kids so far. And in those six years, I've only had three teachers reach out to us about something positive that wasn't necess, like that wasn't required of them. Three, like I cried three times this year because I had three teachers finally reach out just to make a connection outside of the required parent-teacher meetings. I mean, I was a school teacher. There's a reason I'm not a school teacher anymore. I know they're overworked and undervalued. I, I know how much work it is. It's just those little things like that that foster that community from day one all the way through. I think it would just make such a big difference in everyone's lives if we can work on those little things. That's all.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else who wishes to address? Seeing none, we will move on to presentation for the Mid-Ohio Food Bank.
Keith, I just have an announcement here. I would like to welcome the Mid-Ohio Food Bank here this evening. We have John Stanton, who is a representative of the Mid-Ohio Food Bank. We also have Renee Roberts, who is from the Food Pantry, and they're in the front row. From our district, we have Brent Kessler, our supervisor of food service, Joanne Campbell, our assistant supervisor, Beth Hoser, and Cindy Morrison. Is that correct? Did I get that right? Did I say the name right? How? Hoosier. See, that's the reason I mispronounced it on purpose. But we have those representatives with us, so if you'd like to come forward. And Mid-Ohio Food Bank has a presentation for our district.
Nothing like a good Hoosier.
Good evening. My name is John Stanton, and I represent Mid-Ohio Food Bank. I'm a product acquisitions representative. This is Renee Roberts, and she's actually going to present, representing the pantry, Pickerton Food Pantry, the certificate of recognition awarded to Pickerton Local Schools Food Services. December, I'm sorry, January 1, 2020 through December 31, 2020. Your generous donations provided our neighbors in need with 3,166 meals. Thank you for your continued partnership to create a hunger-free and healthier community. Signed, Matt Habash, President and CEO of Mid-Ohio Food Collective. Would you like to present that, please?
John, could I just say one thing I forgot to mention before the presentation? I just want our community to know, the items that were donated have, are items that were consumable items that were going bad, obviously. And so we were able to donate them before that happened. And I think that's, I just didn't want our community to think we were just giving food without presenting our own students first. This was something that was consumable items that we were giving to the food bank. So, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I would like to add on to that, that this certificate represents 3,166 meals that were donated by the Pickerton Local Schools to the food bank. And it's so appreciated by our clients. And one of the unintended results of this is we get field trips. So kids will come in, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, school field trips, parents with their children. And the kids will come in, and I get the opportunity to show them the food that was donated by the schools, and they recognize it. They'll recognize the little cups of applesauce or, you know, the banana breads, and they get very excited. So when they're donating their food and they're putting it in the bin in the cafeteria, it might not make the connection. No, yes, we're doing a good thing. We're helping people. But when they can come into the pantry and see it, I see the light bulbs. And it's, it's rewarding for me to see that. Having worked with kids, I subbed for the schools for many years, but it's always fun to teach them and to see how they go, oh, wow, yeah, we are helping people. And they get very excited. So on behalf of the Food Pantry, thank you so much for everything that you've done for us this year and through the pandemic.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you to everyone involved with this. This is, this is great efforts and community services. Please keep up all your efforts and, and keep this partnership going. Oh, no, I just got timed out.
You want me to take it? Obviously, you want somebody else to say who's next.
There we go. No, I just, my, my screen just went away. It goes way too quick. Need to reset it. All right. Next up is the Treasurer's Report.
Item D1, are the minutes from the October 25th meeting?
Motion to approve. Second.
Questions or comments? Roll.
Mrs. Sanders.
Yes.
Mrs. Olshewski.
Yes.
Mrs. Neekamp.
Yes.
Mr. Kristof.
Yes.
Item D2 would be the October monthly report.
Move for approval. Second.
Questions or comments? Come roll, please.
Mrs. Olshewski.
Yes.
Mrs. Neekamp.
Yes.
Mr. Kristof.
Yes.
Mrs. Sanders.
Yes.
So I've actually distilled the five-year forecast down to about 10 or 12 slides. I'm going to show that real quick. Ryan, if you're ready.
Is that a tab here in the?
No, not yet. But it is a big tab up there. So what I want to show tonight is our forecast. This is for our operating funds and the general fund as of November 8, 2021. And a lot of similarities to previous presentations. You probably have more documents in your five-year forecast than I've put in the past. There's a state funding supplement because the state funding formula has changed, and that's actually something that I want to go over today. But ultimately, the sources of our revenue over time, the graph on the left shows that we are kind of a unique district in that we are almost 50% funded by the state and 50% funded by local sources. You can see that real estate is in the dark blue. You've got income tax in your gray. And then public utility, personal property, which is in the orange. So if you look at those three bars, that's pretty much up to the 50% mark, and that's local. And then if you take the yellow, which is state funding, you add the lighter blue, which is the property tax allocation, which is roughly a 12 and a half percent refund that's given back to property tax owners who do not have to pay the full tax bill. They only pay 87 and a half percent. That comes from the state. And then finally, all other operating revenue in green. So we are almost uniquely situated from any district I've ever been in. State funding is very critical to us, but so is local. We're about half and half. Our funding over time is the top bar chart. And the bottom bar chart is a dual where it shows the gross increase that we are forecasting in revenue. And then the orange line charts the percent increase or decrease over the previous year. It is historical as well. So you can see that it shows from 2018 all the way out to 2026. On the expenses side, we've got the same kinds of breakdown. Only we know we are a people business. So the bar graph on the left, if you add salaries plus benefits, like most schools, we're at roughly the 80% mark. The next biggest chunk is our purchase services. Then you have supplies and materials in kind of the yellow color. And finally, you've got the other uses and other objects. Kind of, I guess that color's hard to see. I just know it's the little sliver at the top. Same concepts. You've got what we are forecasting our expenditures to be all the way through 2026, and then each year's change. This really puts both of those pieces together. So what's revenue look like compared to expenses? Now, in any given year where revenue falls below expenditure, remember, that's why you have a cash carryover, so that you do not have to obviously hit the emergency or panic button. In those years where the orange line is above the blue, we're just forecasting that we would be eating into or using our carryover reserves. And if you put it together with what the changes look like. So the orange line represents changes in expenditures versus the blue line, changes in expenses. And in 2021, yes?
Nope, go on.
In 2021, that's the direct effect of the budgetary cuts that we made, the fact that we weren't operating at full capacity for most of the year. And we actually had a year where we cut our expenses while our revenue nominally increased. But you can see from '22 forward that each year we are anticipating an increase in expenses that exceeds the forecasted increase in revenue.
Why the jumping around on the percentage change in revenues?
Because the state funding formula is phased in in pieces. And at this point in time, I can only with certainty forecast the next two years. But when I look in the final three years, I have flatlined pretty much in '24 and '25 because I don't know what that's going to be. But I went ahead and took that governor, for lack of a better word, off in '26. That's far enough out that if that ends up being something that doesn't work out, it's far enough down the road that it shouldn't cause this dramatic impact. But essentially, the state is guaranteeing that in the next two years, any increases in state funding, we only get 16% of it in fiscal year '22, and we only get 33% of it in fiscal year '23. Beyond that, we're in the dark. Some folks are anticipating that it'll keep going up, and you'll get 2/3 of the increase that you're supposed to get in fiscal year '24. And then it's supposed to be, if the, the way the formula is written, if the legislature doesn't do something different, you're supposed to get 5/6ths or 83.3% of the forecasted increase in the, in the formula.
Thank God they use round numbers.
Yes. So if you look at the state funding supplement, you'll actually see that interplay as to what's going on. In a slide or two, I'll show you what really has been the big impact for our five-year forecast. If you put those pieces together, what does our annual revenue surplus or shortfall look like as compared to our cash balance? So the blue bars represent forecasted or actual budget surpluses or deficits. And then you can see that your orange dotted line represents a two-period moving average for surplus and shortfall. Last year, we actually pretty much broke even, 162,223. But you can see that we're forecasting budget deficits for each of the five years of this forecast. What happens to cash balance when expenses exceed revenue is we know cash balance begins to be used. So this would show what our cash balance is forecasted to look like all the way out to 2026. So what changed from May 21? If you just look at FY '22, you can see that real estate has a slight increase. Income tax has rebounded with a vengeance. That, I've changed the forecast that that's up roughly $1 million from what was being forecasted in May for 2022. State funding is actually down $1.1 million. So that may not make sense until I show you something on the next slide. And then the other sources are up a nominal 292,000. Here's the big deal. Students are now funded where they go to school. In the past, if it's, if a student went to a community school, open enrollment, or they were on a special ed scholarship, in theory, we got the funding. But because we were capped by the formula, we really didn't get the additional funding. But then off the bottom of the formula, we paid for, and the dollars followed the child when they went to the new school. That's just how the formula worked. Now students are educated where they go. So if we have a student who goes to a community school, that child is no longer a part of any part of what we do funding-wise, including the cost of the purchase services. So that $4.237 million represents that we are no longer paying for any community school costs out, $2.3 million. We're not paying for any open enrollment costs out, $665,000 last year. And we're not paying for any special ed scholarships, roughly $1.2 million. That happens every year of the forecast. So the funding formula is dramatic for this district. Because what ultimately happens is, is even though we're not going up dramatically in new revenue from the state, we are absolutely getting rid of costs that were impacting us disproportionately because we were a capped district. So we had a cap on our revenue. Even though we were growing in students, we really couldn't grow in revenue. Even though, as we grew, if kids came onboard who were special ed scholarship or who were community school or who were open enrollment, they were still taking the full amount off the bottom. they were still taking the full amount off the bottom line for that kid's education. That's a dramatic shift in the funding formula for us. What does that mean when you put it all together? The forecast just got better in each year by the numbers that you see there. So compared to where we were in May, revenue is up a moderate three hundred and ninety five thousand dollars. But expenses are down five point eight million. In fiscal twenty three, when the funding formula starts to kick in with a little more vigor, we can get a third of our increase that we're supposed to get if the formula worked exactly the way it was supposed to. Funding is up two and a half. But again, no more open enrollment, no more community school, and no more scholarships impacting the district. That cost is gone. We just dropped five point four million dollars in costs. Same in twenty four, and you see those same numbers in twenty five. The net annual change to the five year forecast is the delta of those two. So it'd be revenues minus expenses. What does that mean? That means that we were over the next five years basically able to put about thirty three million dollars back into the forecast that would have otherwise been spent. Now, to be sure, we still are ending with the ending balance in, in two thousand and twenty six that we can't end with. There's no way that a hundred and forty million dollar school can end with only two million dollars in the bank. But one thing I can say with certainty, unless something dramatic changes in a mid biennial budget review, I do not believe that there's any urgency within this biennium to feel like that we have to seek operating dollars. We were thinking about potentially on the unfortunate stars aligning of a bond issue at some point in the next year, along with then right after it, some sort of operating issue. If I had to say right now with certainty, I can say with certainty, I do not feel like we even need to consider in the twenty two, twenty three, twenty one, twenty two, or twenty two, twenty three school year, the consideration of an operating levy to me is off the table. And that is a relief. I can't say with certainty what happens after twenty two, twenty three, mainly because a new legislature could decide that all the work that was just done on the fair school funding plan is worthless and they dump it all. But as the funding formula stands right now, we're going to have a favorable impact and you can see where it all is. We're only going up a cumulative seven point eight million dollars in revenue. I say cumulative, if you think about it, that's seven point eight million on about a hundred and thirty five million times five. It's not very much. The key is over on the right hand side. All of those costs for community school, all of those costs for open enrollment and scholarship are coming out. Now, the reversal could happen if two years from now, they decide that the former funding formula is the way to go and all of those kids go back into our school and we got to pay for them. The exact same thing could happen in flip flop. But one thing for certain is in the next two years, I do not see, because it's law. I mean, you would have to change law at this point to change what you see here, at least for the next couple of years.
Ryan, could I ask a question? Theoretically, then, if we go back on for a bond issue in November and happen to pass, that is critical news that our community should know that as far as operating funds go. Because if you recall, when we were going to build the new junior high, we were actually reorganizing and revamping our staff and wasn't going to add additional operating at the time of the bond. So that's even better news, meaning that we may be able to push out the operating if we would happen to pass in November, if we, if the board chooses to go back on in November for.
That's exactly why I discussed it tonight. As you can see, the yellow line represents cash balance. And even by the end, remember that two thousand and twenty four means the twenty three, twenty four school year. Even by the end of the twenty three, twenty four school year, we're still forecasting right now about a twenty million dollar cash carryover. So just based on this graph, if someone were to push me for, when would you say that you really need to seriously consider? We couldn't, I would not want to end the twenty four, twenty five school year with only ten million dollars. And that's roughly where that is. So if, if one were to push me on something that I would disclaim that there's things that could change between now and then, I would say we need to consider levies, starting an operating levy, spring of twenty four, fall of twenty four. We just bought ourselves another couple, if not three, school years with operating funds. That would be if there's not a complete reversal of this formula. The good thing about the formula that's working for us now is we are a growing district. With a growing district, with a formula that works, we get more operating funds. We all know, though, that with a growing district, you're also growing enough that you're, we got the other problem that we dealt with, is we're getting too, too crowded in our buildings. And ultimately, you get to the point to where you don't have room.
I thought we were capped.
That's what, we're not capped with the new funding formula.
We're not capped, okay.
Now, we're capped in that the formula will work. And then they say, that's why I said the first year, let's say the first year, if the formula worked exactly like it was supposed to.
Which is this year.
This year. We're supposed to get, let's say, six million dollars additional. They're putting a sliding restriction on it that this year we'll get sixteen percent of that six million. Then next year, they'll let it go to thirty three percent of that eight million, or whatever it goes to. Then you're, you're kind of in the dark from that biennium forward. I have estimated, I actually dropped back to twenty five percent in twenty two, twenty three, twenty four. And then I went up to a third. And then finally, in the final year, I went to fifty percent. At no point do I exceed what the law or the funding formula as it's currently written is supposed to do. I believe by the twenty four, twenty five school year, if the formula does what it's supposed to, they're supposed to have phased in eighty three percent of all the new revenue you're supposed to get from the state. And then in twenty five, twenty six, no restrictions, the formula works. I highly doubt we ever get there. I just don't see that happening. But with the presumption that I put in that we at least get to fifty percent. But again, our big impact is not so much the new funding, even though we get new funding. It's will they stay true to you educate a kid where they are and all those costs now are not coming off the bottom line? That was our big impact. So we would have been projecting in two thousand and twenty five, in the May forecast, I, I believe around a six to eight million dollar deficit. And now in twenty four, twenty five, you can see that we're at about a ten million dollar carryover cash balance. To be sure, I wouldn't mind having ten million dollars in my own personal account, but ten million dollars for this district is a little over two payrolls. So we got to have better reserves than that, which is why I would say twenty four would be the year I would have circled right now.
What's the policy? Does twenty, what year do we dip below the magic line in the policy?
If you look on the board report, you'll see that. So if you go back one agenda item and look in the executive summary, that year is, we still have fifty six days of cash forecasted at the end of twenty three, twenty four. We have thirty one point four days of cash at the end of twenty four, twenty five. Forty five is the policy. So that's why I'm saying your twenty four, twenty five school year, at the latest, the fall of twenty four, possibly exploring the spring of twenty four. It's a timing issue that if you miss it and then you don't pass in the fall of twenty four, then you're really pushing it because by the end of twenty six, I mean, we, we can't, we can't have a carryover balance of two point nine two six million. That would be distressing. Questions? There's a lot more detail.
It's a good report, Ryan.
In the forecast, lots of information to dig into. If you have any questions about it, obviously, the community can see those same reports that you're seeing. I'll get this loaded as well. But I'm trying to obviously distill probably sixty pages of documentation into one thing.
Yeah, that's well done.
I like, I like, I like what you did to condense it down. That's good news.
It is good news.
Only other thing I'd say, Ryan, is congratulations. When you look back in prior year, five year forecasts, your actuals are almost, they're, they're, they're so close, the actuals, to what you had forecasted. And I can see the difference is just the formula going forward.
Yeah, that one's hard. And it's hard to go beyond the current biennium. And yet, that's what we do. But I liken it to the, the weather guy or weather gal. You do the best you can to forecast and then everyone gets mad when there's no snow day.
I am gonna, I appreciate the fact that we don't have to start talking about operating money until theoretically the calendar year twenty four because we collect in arrears, so we have to pass. Whenever we pass in year one, it's not, we don't start collecting until year, calendar year two. I'm going to be a little bit of a Debbie Downer. I am very concerned, well, let me rephrase. I think it's important for us to communicate with the community, to develop a train, a, a strategy and a plan for ballot issues. I think that what we learned with the last failure, we heard a resounding statement that we just didn't know. And you can blame that on whatever, marketing, what, you know, all sorts of different things. But the slow drumbeat, for me at least, needs to begin today. And we've done that, we're beating the drum slowly and somewhat quietly for whenever the next bond issue will go on the ballot. But I, in my opinion, it's just my two cents, is that we need to start talking cumulatively about the upcoming asks of the community for the next five years, say. I don't want to, I don't want to test this community right now. We failed the last three bond issues we put on the ballot for varying reasons. We are completely behind the eight ball in passing a bond issue and our kids and staff and community are suffering. So I don't want to take that long to pass, assuming we can get this thing passed next to the bond. I don't want to take that long and, and, you know, bite our fingernails down to the quick with, with an operating issue. Now, I know that's a lot to swallow for, for the community, I get it. And I've kind of changed my tune on this, but we can't go through another delay factor assuming we can pass a bond next year. The levy will be at most two years after that. So that is kind of, it's not as fast as it used to be in the heyday when we were on the ballot every other minute. But we, I, I don't think time is, is our luxury right now. And I, I do think we need to be very clear with the community that our needs and why we're asking for what we're asking, for both a bond and a levy. I'm glad we're talking about it tonight, but it will come quick. I mean, I appreciate, I appreciate the near term forecast for sure. That's a gift. But it's not going to last, it's going to run out. The honeymoon's going to run out quickly, I think.
What I'm trying to, and I appreciate those points. I guess what I'm trying to do more than anything is provide my viewpoint that there could at least be, and it's not going to be maybe as much as some people would like, but there would at least be a gap, assuming that we attempt a bond issue within the next year. There would be a gap of a couple of years. Some people may say, well, I wish it was ten, you know? Yeah, I, I do too.
It has been ten.
Well, it's been, it's been since August of eleven since we've had any operating issues. That's correct. So I, I know some in the community may just simply say, I don't care what you call it. Operating bond, a levy's a levy to me, understood. But we've not sought operating dollars since August of two thousand and eleven.
You know, and that's, that works for us and against us.
Agreed.
Because those of us who remember the heyday just celebrate that fact. And it, it makes us say, good grief, the school district's done a heck of a job, partnered with the state, they've been good to us too. But there are other folks who are like, we got enough money, you don't need any more from us. They, you know, a lot of people in this community haven't lived through those days where it was a nail biter. But we, we've done an excellent, you and the treasurer's office and the various folks, you know, that have sat in those chairs have done a heck of a job. But it's almost like a double edged sword sometimes.
I do think that post bond survey that we had done, obviously, money was the most resounding reason that, that it failed. But it's hard to delineate whether it was money for in its purest form or fear of the pandemic and everything that was going on with economics. So because, because our increase in our income tax and everything else would tell us that that was, may have been unfounded at the time because it's starting to go up. So it would be interesting to see, not that you would survey again that quickly, but to see ultimately if there's a much larger comfort level with where people are or feel that we are as a community economically right now in their own personal homes. So, yeah.
We have data to suggest, and I'll do it again in the fall of twenty two, like I did in the fall of nineteen. The housing market is so hot that we're anticipating another year twenty two values. Now, yes, I'm not misspeaking. I mean, next year's duplicate will almost have to go up if you understand how the auditor and the state department of taxation wants the median sales price of homes in a particular region as compared to what the auditor's median value is. They want that to be ninety four percent. They want the median value to be about ninety four percent of the actual sales price. And there's, there's a logic to that because if you put it right at a hundred percent, then that means exactly half your homes are overvalued and exactly half are under. So they, they shoot for ninety four. And it's real, it's real simple. If you look at what our homes are selling for and then what their median value is, there's a delta right now of roughly twenty percent. So what do I mean by that? That if you're shooting for that ninety four percent, that right now, the median value of homes that are selling are only about eighty percent. What the auditor's value is, is about eighty percent of what it's selling for. That's telling you that that delta between ninety four and eighty or ninety four and seventy five, that's pretty much what the auditor's going to increase. Right now, that's at least twenty percent. So lest folks listening to this think, oh no, my tax bill's going up twenty percent. Remember that that will not happen. Your tax bill will go up very minimally because all the voted levies, the, the millage gets rolled back so that you're not paying anymore for anything that you voted in than what was originally voted in. Why do I bring that up? If our values go up another twenty percent, that will most definitely impact the millage that would need to be collected for bond issue. We were at two point nine mills when we were using twenty twenty values. So I would be eager to see what we could do if we're using twenty twenty two values. And depending on how quickly we try to go back on the ballot, and there's some things we can discuss tonight. But ostensibly in November of twenty two, we could very well have twenty two values certified by the time that happens, and that would be wonderful.
Are you concerned at all, though, that that would be negated by the rising cost of materials?
I'd have to work with Vince and our architects on estimates. Surely, costs have gone up. There's no doubt about it. I personally believe that there's enough growth in this district that we can forecast, not crazy. that we can forecast, not crazy, but we, we could just forecast reasonable growth in this district that would allow us to virtually collect minimal, if any, mills. And we would still have enough money for our debt service. That's another discussion, if you ever wanna talk that through. It's not hocus pocus or playing games. It's just a simple matter of the value of your district's property is going up enough that when you take existing debt service millage and apply it, you're able to generate enough debt service to pay your debt without adding additional millage. Most schools in the Columbus area run what's called no new millage or no new, no new tax issues. And literally all that is, and I'll, I'll make this comparison. If you've ever bought a car with the equity in your home, you might kinda understand the same gist. The value of the property in the district has gone up enough that when you take, imagine, so taxes are tax rate, mills, times value equals taxes generated. Your tax rate stays the same, but your value shoot up 20%. Then you've got enough to, to spin off enough debt service payment that with a new levy, you can just simply say, we don't need to collect any. That was our strategy, actually, last November. And, and even in May, we would have passed for 2.9, but then worked with the auditor to ask for the auditor, there's no need to collect 2.9. In fact, we had numbers to substantiate. And I know I'm just rattling off tonight, but we had numbers to substantiate. We could have collected as low as a mill and a half.
I think that was lost on the community.
It was.
It's lost on the auditor's office, that they wouldn't allow us to put that type of millage on to begin with.
And I know we've had conversations about the county auditor.
Making us put it at 2.9. So that's a whole nother conversation.
Yeah, right.
We're working towards that. But the, the other thing you can't, you can't state it's gonna happen. And at the end of the day, the auditor does have the authority to say what will be collected. So state law makes it pretty clear that the ballot language has to assume what's called level debt service.
Right.
And that millage amount is, is a formula that's calculated in state law. But that does not mean that's what has to be collected after it passes. So we'll work on that.
Yeah, I, I just kinda wanna, I think the sooner the conversations, the better. I think it's gonna take a while for us to talk about, process, understand, analyze, arm wrestle about what needs to happen next, the design, the millage. I'm gonna go back to the design. I mean, I think it's important at this point for us to, for me at least, I feel it's important that we need to talk about whether or not that design is the one that we want. So.
What type of design?
Well, physical design?
Or the design of the levy?
The design of the issue.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. And what, and what we're gonna spend the monies on, for instance. So I, I just think that while we think we have a lot of time, it just, it, we all know it goes fast. So I, I would like to see us at whatever level and whoever's around the table start talking about next steps. Ideally, I would like us to make sure the community understands that staying off the ballot for operating money isn't a forever thing, that it's gonna come around the corner in a couple, you know, two, three years. I, I just, I don't know. I, I just feel that the community, the more they have, the more information they have and the more they understand how we got to that decision, the better they are to support us.
Other questions?
I missed the very beginning. Can you start over?
Did you have a motion already?
Do you have a motion in a second?
I don't think so, no.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Second. This is for the five year, five year forecast. Item three.
Mr. Jenkins, can you call the roll, please? Mrs. Neekamp?
Yes.
Mr. Kristoff?
Yes.
Mrs. Sanders?
Yes.
Mrs. Olszewski?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you. I have to make an adjustment real quick. Hold on.
Are you putting that 25 million back in?
Yes. And then the final item would be just a continuing rolling update of donations from folks in the community for various and sundry reasons, all serving a good public purpose. And that's all I have. Thank you. Our next section is consent agenda. Dr. Briggs, do you wanna take us through those items?
Yes, board members. This evening, under consent agenda items, number one is certificated licensed personnel. We're asking the board to approve the letter of resignation from the person listed and their building and assignment and effective date. We have an unpaid leave of absence for the two individuals as listed, their building assignment, and also their effective date. We have teacher and tutor recommendations for the '21, '22 school year, obviously following approval of the contracts for this coming school year with employment materials and background reports. And one is a replacement and one is due to a need with our CLIP program, or I'm sorry, with our EL program. We're asking the board to approve substitute teachers this evening as listed on the agenda. And then we have our diversity and engagement liaisons. We're excited that we have those individuals from Tollgate Elementary, Tollgate Middle, Lakeview Junior High, and Pickerton High School North on the agenda for approval this evening. That is the certificated licensed personnel section. Is there any questions from board members? Hearing none. Number two, under consent agenda items, is support personnel. Board, we're asking the board to approve, board, we're asking the board to approve to accept a letter of resignation from the four individuals as listed. Their building, assignment, and effective date. We do have contract adjustments for two individuals with their current position and their new position with their hourly rate. Support personnel recommendations. We're recommending the following individuals be approved for one year limited contracts, pending, again, completion of employment materials and background reports, and they are all replacement positions. We're asking the board to approve this evening substitute support service recommendations effective for this school year. We have the positions, their hourly rate, and the individuals listed on the agenda. That is the conclusion of the support personnel section of the consent agenda. Is there any questions from board members? Hearing none. Number three is personnel supplemental contracts and stipends. Again, it's that time of year where we're approving supplemental and stipends for employees. We do have a rescension of supplemental contracts and/or stipends for the two individuals as listed. We have a sup, we're asking the board to approve this evening supplemental contracts and stipend recommendations for this school year. You'll have the building, the name, the assignment, the group, the step, and the salary for each individual. And we also, on the agenda, have stipends for Pickerton High School Central and Ridgeview STEM Junior High, and the individuals as listed in their assignment and their group and salary. We have volunteer coaches. We're asking the board to approve this evening and/or advisors. This is aligned with our policy 3120.09, volunteers of professional staff, and also policy 4120.09, volunteers of support staff for this school year. We have the building, which is from Pickerton High School North, and also Lakeview Junior High, the individuals and their assignments. Building club volunteers. We're asking, we're recommending to the board for approval of the following club and volunteer advisors for this school year. This is submitted by the building faculty leadership teams for Ridgeview STEM Junior High. And then ticket seller tournament workers, again, multiple buildings. This is, we're asking the board to approve this for athletic events at the hourly rate as listed for this non-staff member. And then game workers. We're asking the board to approve the following individuals as game workers at the hourly rate as listed for multiple buildings. And that is the conclusion of the personnel supplemental contracts and stipend section. Is there any questions from board members? Hearing none. Number four is, under the consent agenda item, we're asking the board to approve the budget and purpose statements as submitted. Is there any questions? Hearing none. The fifth is consent other. The following students have requested to graduate early and return in the spring to receive their diploma and participate in graduation ceremonies with the class of 2022. Congratulations to those individuals as listed. And board members, that is the conclusion of the consent agenda items for this evening.
Thank you. Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Jenkins, can you call the roll, please? Mrs. Neekamp?
Yes.
Mr. Kristoff?
Yes.
Mrs. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Mrs. Olszewski?
Yes.
The next section is section F for discussion action items. Dr. Briggs, do you wanna walk us through those four items?
Yes, Mr. Lopez. Discussion action items under F this evening. Number one is job descriptions. This is a second reading for the four positions as listed. We're asking the board to approve those this evening.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to remind the administration that if they could please redline these current job descriptions with recommended changes. I know this is the second read, but they need to be on both reads. Unless they're new, and that should be highlighted as well.
Anything else? Mr. Jenkins, can you call the roll, please? Mr. Kristoff?
Yes.
Mrs. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Mrs. Olszewski?
Yes.
Mrs. Neekamp?
Yes.
Thank you, board members. The second one, under discussion action items this evening, is board policy revision by law 0169.1. It's a second reading. This is a request to address the board. If you recall, we had this discussion at our last board meeting, and the changes were made to the form.
Question to approve?
Second.
Any discussion?
I, I wanna thank everybody for wading through this process. I thought, I think in the end it was pretty healthy. I just wanna clarify, we're making, we're approving the changes to the policy, but do the statements on the request to speak form mirror the changes in policy?
I believe so.
Did you make them?
I mean, there wasn't, really what we did was.
In which case I would completely address them.
The request to address essentially matched already what even on the last time we decided to make the change to. For example, you're just checking whether you're district or not. Yeah. As far as I'm concerned, it's the same information.
Okay. That's what I saw as well, but I didn't know. I was, okay, thank you again. Thank you, guys.
Any further discussion? Mr. Jenkins, can you call the roll, please? Mrs. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Mrs. Olszewski?
Yes.
Mrs. Neekamp?
Yes.
Mr. Kristoff?
Yes.
Thank you, board members. Number three is administrator resignation. We probably should have done this earlier because Scott, you actually approved him as a, a teacher before. So we're hoping that we, we accept his resignation. We wanna congratulate Scott, thank him for the work that he's done as a coordinator. He is moving back into a teaching position, and we're asking the board to accept his letter of resignation.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Jenkins, can you call the roll, please? Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Mrs. Olszewski?
Yes.
Mrs. Neekamp?
Yes.
Mr. Kristoff?
Yes.
Mrs. Sanders?
Yes.
Thank you, board members. The last thing under discussion action is an addendum to Fairfield County Sheriff's Office SOR contract. We're excited to be able to, with, with Ryan's work, with, with Vince and the buildings, to add an additional SOR, SRO officer at each of our high schools.
Uh-uh.
Or I'm sorry.
This is just.
Did I say that wrong?
This should just be.
This is just an addendum, I'm sorry.
This is for North.
I'm sorry, this is for North.
Okay, what?
Is there a motion in a second?
Sorry about that.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
What happened?
Just a comment.
What happened?
Where's the city contract?
We're still working on it. Yeah. A couple of things were not as clear as we thought that we wanted them to be. So we reached back out today, and I'm confident we'll get it done.
And this, I'm sorry, just one of, this contract with the county expires at the end of the school year?
Correct.
I know, I, my comment was, I know there's maybe not a lot of time to totally develop and implement, but I made this comment when the conversation first started, that I hope there is a, an effort to take the time, since we have the additional support, to develop some type of programming that they can assist us with. That, because I think there's great opportunities there for them to help develop some programming for our students. More of a diversion than, you know.
And I, I, I would also like to add that I would hope that we look at the totality of our security services, whether they're SROs or whether they're our own staff members. My concern is that our expectations should probably increase for our own staff members as, as well. Maybe a clarity in a job description or what have you. Because I, I think, you know, you seize the opportunity when it comes to you, and now's the opportunity to look at all of it. Just my two cents. But, okay.
Any other discussion? Mr. Jenkins, can you call the roll, please? Mrs. Olszewski?
Yes.
Mrs. Neekamp?
Yes.
Mr. Kristoff?
Yes.
Mrs. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Our next section is section G for discussion only. There are four job descriptions. This is for the first reading. Four job descriptions. Any discussion about those at this point?
What is, uh, I'll reiterate my request for redlining these documents unless they're all new. I don't think they are, but. And then I'm, you can.
Question, should they be redlined in the, do you think it should be redlined here or redlined in the executive content so that way what we're passing is actually a clean copy?
Either way.
No, I understand.
This is just the first read, so I don't know that it matters.
I think we do need to have the red line, but I'm wondering if that would make it more efficient if the clear copy is what is here, and then you have in executive content, the red line.
Oh, I don't care where it is. But if you're gonna ask us to approve changes, you need to show us what the changes are. Not to be super grumpy about it, but we've been down this conversation path before. And again, I don't know if these are new. I think maybe one of them is, but yeah, I don't care where the red line is. But it's also a public document, and maybe it shouldn't be in executive content, so everybody can look at it. But I don't care where it is. Good point.
I just worry that there's more chances of making a mistake on, once you go back and start taking the red line out and stuff.
Don't do it until we approve it, in my opinion.
No, I'm saying, chance of making a mistake after we approve it, then it changes when you're taking them out after we've approved it. That was, that was my only thought.
Any other discussion? So I presumably those will come back at the next meeting. We'll make sure they're redlined. G2 is board policy revision, drug-free workplace first reading. I know there is a ton of information here, but I personally wanna thank everybody that's been involved in, in this, because there's quite a bit of information. But if there's any other discussion or people wanna make any comments?
I have one comment, one general comment, that I know it's a lot of information, and it seems when this started, it was an effort to clarify procedures for our administration, for our staff. There are concerns, or there will be concerns expressed in a few of the areas. So just, I think, so that all the board members are very clear that the final language may, I mean, it may look like this, it may not. There were concerns, and the biggest concern was the post-accident drug testing. So I think that is one area that may be a challenge. We may be challenged with that area. So I'm sure those conversations will happen, and everyone will get to the place where it can be something to embrace and approve in its final form, so. So if we see it and then we don't see it again for, you know, in two weeks, because it's from conversation, that might be why, so.
So in general, the two sets of documents are, one set is for classified staff, and one is for, it says professional, is that certificated or all other?
Three thousands would be your certificated standard, four is your classified.
Classifieds, okay. And then the two sets of AGs mirror each other essentially, based on the level of staffing classification? Typically, those AGs look a little different. Is that because the legal eagles got involved? But that's a formatting thing, you guys are going to change it. And I guess we're okay with this? Yeah, okay.
My only thing was that when we, when we do things like partner with the Palooza, I think we're going to, because of how these are both written, need to clearly mark that we're, for instance, the beer tent is, is not on district property, but is actually on city property, because I wouldn't want to exclude any of our staff from being able to tend the community event, and people potentially think that they're consuming alcohol on district property. Since it says at any time. So I think that's more so for Vince, just making sure that that's kind of marked out with guidelines.
And are, is all of this new? All six documents are new, okay.
Yeah. And technically, 412201 and 312201, the actual policy, they've only ever been about the three paragraphs you see. So everything else, though, do you know, Keith or Heather, what specifically would have changed in the policy itself? I don't think a whole lot looks any different.
There were only a couple of words.
Yeah, it was just, Lori and Clay would probably be able to speak to that the best in the policy, but it was just, yeah, it was just very couple of words. What we're trying to do is clarify that.
Yeah, the bulk of the work was obviously the operational guidelines.
Yeah, the operational guidelines is, is the actual clarification that works off our current drug-free workplace policy, and then the appendices and forms are just that. It's what you as a supervisor or whatever would use as your playbook, if you will. Here's, here's, this, you know, you have this, this came up. You go here, you get this form out, this is the form you got to use. Check, 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 check. So that way incidents are handled in a much more consistent manner.
Yeah, I've talked about that a lot.
You have a playbook, if you will.
I'm going to look that up and give that to Ryan from our policy meeting, because it was sent to us from legal counsel, what couple of words were changed, and that was about it.
Yeah, they gave us a summary, right, of the changes? Okay, any other discussion? Next section is information only, section H. H1 is plan for progress. Dr. Briggs, do you want to go through that with us?
Yeah, board members, this evening, we won't spend a lot of time on this, but we just wanted to, I know we are scheduling conferences to talk to you about building capacity, building enrollment numbers. A lot of that deals with our plan for progress and how we're implementing that. And it goes back to Kathy's comments. We need to start letting our community know our needs, and part of those conversations that we'll have with you will show, you know, where we're at as far as some of the enrollment numbers, and as we mentioned, the building capacities and the need for a new building. So that is part of our plan for progress, and we'll continue to talk about it in its more modern facilities. But again, we're not going to forget, as Mr. Henson said in his comments, you know, we are about academics, and the academic part of our plan for progress is as important as anything, in having the facilities and the programs to support our students. So we will continue to focus on that as well, as well as Ryan's office with the lean and efficient operations. So those are our three pillars, and they will always be our three pillars as we're working forward to provide our kids what they need to learn. And so hopefully, within the next week or two, when you're scheduled to get that information, that'll help kind of give you, or bring you up to speed on where we're at as far as our enrollment capacity goes in the buildings.
Can I ask a question about our overcrowding situation?
Yes, ma'am.
I know money doesn't grow on trees, obviously, but given our enrollment figures, specifically at the secondary level, which is where a number of our student discipline, the majority, I would assume, of our student discipline issues are occurring, do we have enough bodies in the building just to be a presence, whether they are certificated staff or not? We had a meeting with the community a week ago, and everybody's thrown around that article, image, picture, story about school districts that are bringing dads in, you know, just to sit. And I know, and I'm just, I'm just saying, are we also looking at just having a presence of bodies in our buildings to manage our kids and the sheer numbers of them? I was over at Central today, and they had half the students in the building, and I'm like...
It's a lot of kids.
That's still a lot of kids, so...
To answer your question, Kathy, yes. We've, we're constantly trying to find ways, you know, we talk about the safety and health of our, and the safety of our students and staff as being our top priority, and it still is. We are at capacity, there's no doubt about it. I was at both high schools this morning, part of our restart, reset day, and whatever we call it. Part of addressing that is behaviors, and how we can assist our students, especially our younger students, our ninth and 10th graders, with the behaviors that we've seen with our buildings being crowded. And I think if we start there and start addressing the behaviors, I think you don't necessarily need bodies to solve that issue. But to your point, that is the reason we're looking at different support from Fairfield County and also the city.
Sure.
You know, I know people have difference of opinions about putting officers in schools. To me, it's more than that. It's about, as Lori said, it's about relationships. It's about the relationships they build with kids. It's not about arresting kids, it's not about, it's about being a presence and being in our buildings. So we are addressing it, and we have talked about how we're using our classified employees compared to our certificated.
Sure.
And some of those things we have to address, and a lot of that is management. I hate the term management, but a lot of that falls down on how we're using the current people we have.
I appreciate that. I mean, this is one board member's opinion that I fully support. If we just need to have more bodies in the building to manage the kids, I...
Kathy, I do want to...
I'm just, I mean, there's no easy answer, and there won't be for the next three years.
And I do want to say kudos to the high school principals and staff. I didn't mention that earlier. And the Board of Education for supporting today, they needed it. And being in those buildings and listening to the staff and to the principals and, you know, for example, I know the schedule that they had today addressed all the issues we talked about, attendance, behaviors, PBIS, all those things that we feel is going to make a positive influence on our kids and our students, they were addressing today. And it was kind of a restart button, and so, you know, like I said, kudos to everybody that supported it, and I think it's going to make a positive difference. We just never had a chance with our current ninth graders to do this. And the reality is, they haven't been in school for almost, you know, almost 18 to 20 months. And then we put them in a high school environment where it's less restrictive than they're ever used to before, and we've got some behaviors we had to address. And so thanks for your support, thanks for our staff support. It's not perfect, but at least we had a day where we can address some of those issues, so.
The other question I would have is just, sometime in the future, just, I know we've, we've talked a little bit about the levy, that, yeah, it's got to come down the road at some point in time, as far as a new school, whatever. And when it comes to construction, not every month is created equal. So I don't want us to just assume, hey, let's look at November and be done. I'd like to know what our options are, starting at the next board meeting, what it would take to get through, and if we passed in, whatever it is, March or April or whatever, what would that?
May.
Is May the next one?
May's the next one.
So May, what would be the target opening date for the school, as opposed to where, whether it was in November? What would be the targeting date for the school? Once you get a building under, under roof and stuff like that, it doesn't make as much difference, but it can, especially since we are shovel-ready. My guess, and I could be totally wrong, is that passing something in May will make a fairly significant difference as to the opening date of a building, as opposed to November, just because, again, we're shovel-ready, so that means that's a whole summer. We could, we could get stuff done outdoors, the dirt and stuff, framing and that. So if you could get that information of, you know, because I know there are deadline dates you have to have things voted in by, and all those kinds of things. If you guys could gather that.
And to your point, Keith, that was one of the reasons we obviously did the work. We did it to McGill property in advance, and being able to run the utilities, and some of the things that we think will save time, putting a building on that site. So, yeah, we can get you some, get the board some options and share them with you.
You have in the documents that were shared in the public, the elections calendar. It's there. The one mile marker that's not there, that I'm certain that we would have to do, and I'm not sure why they didn't put it in there, we would have to be a special needs district. All that means is we have to get state consent from the Ohio Department of Taxation and Ohio Department of Education to do a bond issue. And that is 120 days. So if we read what we see here, and you felt like May was an option you wanted to consider for bond issue, we're needing to get work done resolution-wise as fast as January the 3rd.
Yep.
I personally think we, we asked the question of the community, why did it fail? I don't think that we can assume we're going to get a different response in May without asking and putting kind of that puzzle together and asking whether there would be support for it. I don't think much has changed since when they told us no, or that they don't want any additional taxes. And I would, I would, I guess, beg us to ask the question before we just put something back on as to what would they support? What would they consider? Because it sounded like in our prior survey, it was, I just don't want to, I don't want to support anything that's new money.
You know, it's, it's a balance between what the community will support, which for many is nothing, versus what we need. And I guess I take a slightly opposite, I mean, I hear what Vanessa's saying, but we need space, and we need to, if we feel confident that our ask is what we need, then we need to do a hell of a lot better job of marketing that. And it is a balance, but there are some in the community who will not support one dime of an increase in their debt, and that's just not an option for us.
I mean, in a perfect world, our mileage would be able to be reduced.
I agree 100%.
I mean, that's, that's a huge money, that's a money piece. It's not significant, but it is a financial.
Well, and the other question for me would be, is the auditor willing to blink? Do we have a new person down there yet?
We do.
Okay, so, I mean...
There's an interim.
Yeah.
Or acting, however they call it.
I mean, if we can get some help from the auditor, maybe that'll go a long way towards passing this. I don't know, that's kind of...
And I'm not saying that May is the day or anything, I'm just saying I don't want to miss, because there are certain things we can do that we could say, it just, like you said, it's 120 days. Although in that 120 days, we can decide now we've decided against it, or we've decided something else. But if we miss that day, that loses that option. And so that's, I just want to make sure that we're all aware of what our, what our options are, and we keep our options open until we make those kinds of decisions that you're talking about.
And we do, you know, obviously Ryan's report tonight with the five-year forecast is positive, and that's a story we have to tell too, and say to our community, and things obviously have changed since we were on the ballot last. So I appreciate all the comments and feedback.
So your other deadlines, and you could just always work that 120. You're talking roughly July 10th or 11th or so for November. And there is the opportunity for a special in August. So there are three opportunities in 2022. And certainly, we'll have to decide what the best would be. But if the question was, how many chances are there in 2022? There's technically three.
Thank you.
I don't know how we went from the plan for progress to that discussion, but we can tie it together somehow.
Well, it's one of the three legs of the chair.
It's worth it, yeah. Modern facilities.
Space, yep, money.
We, and we talked today, Mr. Lopez, Vince, Heather, and I met. As Chris said, we're going to start having some meetings where we look at capacity, and I would have sent the final enrollment update to Cooperative Strategies. So we believe we're on target to begin to November 22nd, I guess, two weeks from today, and then use the month of December to really start to digest what, what those things are telling us, and share with the community what's coming up. Okay, thank you. Next is H2 COVID-19 update.
Yep, board members, I'll be short on this tonight, but I, we are excited the fact that we do know we have a vaccination now for five to 11-year-olds. We're excited that it's being rolled out. The discussion that we had, obviously, was, the biggest discussion was is the possibility of a mask optional for K-12. And now we are targeting January, when our kids return. The reason being, most importantly, is the fact that it gives our parents and our community time to get their children vaccinated. The second piece of that is, obviously, we have a holiday season built in there, two holidays with Thanksgiving and winter break coming up. So we feel, and I felt, unless it changes, and obviously it could, that the January, the start of the second semester, would be the most appropriate time to make a mask optional for K-12. Obviously, when we say mask optional, you know, some families will choose not to have their children vaccinated, and that's okay. They'll still have the option to wear a mask in the buildings. So that is the biggest update that I have at this point.
Section I, one, public comments, questions.
About this subject you guys were just talking about? And the, the whole levy business, can I talk about that or no? Yes or no?
We talked about it in finance, the finance section.
Go ahead.
Okay, so anyway, take it for, take this for what it's worth, whatever you think it's worth. I spent a lot of time, obviously, the last three and a half months, knocking on a lot of doors and listening to a lot of people. And it didn't, and I've read that survey stuff, the stuff you guys got, I read through all that stuff before I ever started that. And I got a lot of feedback that, we'll just say, in many ways, it confirmed it, but it confirmed it in the sense that, you know, there were people out there who were senior, many seniors that were like, don't increase my taxes, period, for any reason, because if you do, I'll be forced to move, and that kind of thing. You're not going to overcome those folks. You had others. Now, here's where, you know, don't take offense, guys, but the bottom line is there are people out there, and they're not an insignificant number of them, that have trust and confidence issues with you all at large in the... issues with you all at large in, as it relates to the whole athletic facility, you know, what was done, what wasn't done, you know, and was it, it was how it was perceived as being backdoor, you know. Regardless of what you guys think you communicated, that's not what a lot of people out there perceive. And I heard it firsthand. Same with the whole, again, fairness as it relates to minority families. You guys might perceive otherwise, but I'm telling you, that perception is there, that there is a lack of fairness as it relates to DEI efforts. There's also perceptions about spending being wasteful. Again, might not be legit, but again, this is all perceptions and you, you all have the ability to help drive that or, or not. The last comment I'll make is if you all pursue, whatever, whenever you pursue a levy, if you pursue it like you did the last one, being a district-level led effort, you are going to have problems. If you do not pursue it as a grassroots effort where you got like motivated PTO presidents and other types like that out there doing it for you, you're asking for it to get defeated again. Because of, if my, in my opinion, for, if for no other reason than depending on the timing and when you're going after that levy, if you haven't increased the trust and confidence to a much greater level than it is right now out there and it's perceived as a district-led thing. Okay, you know, that, if they don't trust you, then what do you, you're not doing yourself any good. That's why you gotta, it's gotta be grassroots, in my opinion. Further out it is, maybe that's less likely, but if you're still talking, sometime in the next twelve months, you better do it grassroots.
Thank you.
I think it's interesting what Mr. Henson brought up, if you just look at Pew Research. Right now, public trust in government is about the lowest it's been in our country's history. So I think we're seeing that same kind of phenomenon that many other government entities are seeing. I mean, I'm looking at a graphic right here. April of 2021, that has it, has a twenty-four on a scale of a hundred. The highest I see is right at the tail end of the Kennedy administration when it was seventy-seven. And it has steadily declined since then. And it's, right now, about as slow as point it's ever been.
If you remember the survey we got after money, which was huge and substantial, there was a litany of, you know, another pool that were, although a small percentage, they were all in that range of diversity, concerns. You know, all those other things kind of pulled together, but I would encourage anyone, because as Mr. Henson said, when you, when you talk about grassroots, you know, this last, our last two have, our chairs have both been parents in our community. We do have a little bit of a problem right now and that is people maybe willing to give their time. We all understand, we're all busy, everyone is busy. So it, I would say it has gotten a little more difficult from my experience than maybe what it was back in the day when we were running levy campaigns. But certainly that network would be wonderful to try to reestablish. And our PTO president's group is awesome. We just went through with their help, but yeah, people's time has become very precious. And so you have very few, you have five or six people running a campaign, not because they want the control, but because frankly, you just can't get a lot of other people, so.
Volunteering, yeah.
Yeah, if people want to volunteer, I'm sure you could let anyone in this room know and your name will stay on that list, so. Come join us. Or I'll be a volunteer after January.
On things that were addressed in, on the agenda, yes.
I have a whole list, I'm going to try to keep it short. I have to agree with Mark and what he was talking about. I spoke to a couple of parents who I guess felt like at least that they led the grassroots effort when the Tollgate building was built. Again, I don't know when that was, I wasn't here. But they said that there was a lot of parental involvement and they had a whole campaign that if, you know, five hundred people brought five people, nine people with them.
Mine and nine.
Mine and, there we go. That's what it was. So I, I feel like that there's got to be something to that. And yes, getting volunteers for anything is incredibly difficult, so I, I understand that as well. I think asking for the same, I mean, are we talking about asking for the same thing? That makes me really nervous for you guys and for our kids. You know, at the Pick North meeting today, Dr. Overick said several times, like, the building's just too big. The building's just too big. He said it three or four different times. He was talking about, you know, we have uncovered classes because of teacher absences. And he says, you know, so they get to their class and there's a sign on the door that says they're supposed to go to the PAC, but they see the sign on the door. And guess what's closer than the PAC? The cafeteria where their friends and their snacks are. So they go there instead and there's just not enough people, there's too many kids and we can't keep an eye on them. I mean, he said it several times today. So building bigger high schools with more than seventeen, eighteen hundred kids is not going to, one, build a community or keep tabs on them any better than we're doing now. The hallways and bathrooms are my, all of my kids' biggest complaints. That's not going to end when we make the buildings bigger and have more students to every single one of, just, I don't think that's the answer. That's where I'll end.
Thank you. Okay, I don't see anyone else. Any board members, questions, comments?
We just want to remind, I want to remind myself that we're not here in two weeks. We're out at the Fairfield Career Summit.
I guess that's a question.
Oh, sorry.
I had a concern, I had a concern about moving our, moving, our meeting out of the community. So.
Would we be, still be able to stream like we do?
I don't know. My question would be, why not have the meeting? And then if we are taking a tour, then we could just take, go and take the tour. But that's, well, I mentioned something to Clay and I mentioned something.
I don't have a problem with that, but if you want, that's, whatever you guys, maybe I'm in the minority, so. But at the very least, we have a meeting in two weeks.
Yeah, we'll make sure we get it updated if, if it's going to be moved. Any other questions, comments? Entertainer motion to adjourn?
No move.
Second.
Mr. Jenkins, can you call the roll, please? Mrs. Nekem?
Yes.
Mr. Kristoff?
Yes.
Mrs. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Mrs. Olshewski?
Yes.